Good evening. Welcome to the regular session of the Kansas City Board Public Utilities. We welcome you, those of you in the room tonight with us. And anybody who's joining us online via Zoom. As always, we have a public comment section on our agenda this evening. And if you wish to speak to the board, you will be asked to provide your name and address, and we'll have five minutes to speak. If you wish to address the board and you're attending via Zoom, we would ask that you use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application to signal that you would like to address the board. If you are connected by phone only, we would ask that you press star nine if you wish to address the board. And if you are here in the room, we would ask that you sign up on the signup sheet. Comments, again, like I said, comments are limited to five minutes. They should be directed to the board, not to staff. We do caution those who are speaking to the board to not disclose confidential account information or account information about accounts that are not in the community member's name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting for the same concerns. As always, feel free to email or call BPU with any additional concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they should appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Number Three, and Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, General Manager, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Tom Groneman, Second District and Board Vice President, Bob Mylan, First District and Board Secretary, Jeff Bryant, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, and Angela Lawson, Deputy Chief Counsel. As a reminder, please put your phones on silent. And please be aware, as always, that the microphones in the room are very sensitive and pick up comments and record anywhere in the room. Before we begin, if you would please rise and join me in signing our Pledge of Allegiance. Angela, can you do roll call for me, please?
Roll call, Groneman.
Present.
Haley.
Here.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of tonight's agenda, I will ask if there are any comments, edits, suggestions, et cetera?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
Second.
The approval of tonight's agenda has been moved in second, and roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of May third, twenty twenty-three, I'll ask if there are any comments, edits, suggestions, et cetera?
Move to approve.
This is Tom, I second.
The motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of May third, twenty twenty-three, has been moved in second, and roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley. Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, meeting's yours.
First, Chris, is there anyone here sign up to speak? Is there anyone signed up to speak online? All right, thank you. So I'll move on into the General Manager Staff Reports. First item on the agenda is lead copper rule update. I think the boards already have been made aware of what we're doing in this area, so Philip, I think I'll invite you up to kind of bring us up to speed on the work that you've done and any impact to our community that we are currently aware of.
Johnson, Port, there we go. As you guys know, my name is Phil Brown, Senior Civil Engineer over in our Water Civil Engineering Group. And today, I'm just gonna give you a brief update on our lead and copper. Next slide. So as you guys know, we're gonna cover a few key points. First, we're gonna just do a general overview of the lead and copper rule, or technically, it's the lead and copper rule revisions. Where I may go into the cost and mitigations of those costs, depending on time. And then for our Phase One, we're kinda, we're still technically in Phase One, and we're gonna talk about how we're doing our inventory. This is really the bulk of the work. And then Phase Two is really what's coming in the future, just to give you an idea, because that's when you're, the customers and everyone, that's the part they're gonna see quite a bit of. Next slide. So just a brief overview. So the lead and copper rule is not new. It was first published in nineteen ninety-one. And some of these points may feel familiar, especially if you've been on a board for a while, and also because this is the same slide as before. So the lead and copper rule revision was published on our Federal Register, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, so not that long ago. However, it was delayed to December sixteenth. And the reason that is important is because that pushed our compliance date to October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. That's the critical date that we have to have our inventory done. Even though that's all written down and actually promulgated and passed as law on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, Executive Order one three nine nine zero, the EPA decided that were opportunities to improve this rule. And because of that, one of the big things they said, and they're calling out the lead and copper rule revisions improvements, because of that, we already know that some of the things that happen after October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four are going to change. We're hoping to hear those actual rules come out hopefully this year in December. But it is the EPA. I can't predict when they will release rules, as we have seen from a lot of the rules they have released before. So, next slide. So, the big things, the big thing that our customers care about is, one, as you guys know, lead is very dangerous, especially to children. It really impacts the babies more than anything. And so this has a huge health risk that we need to be aware of. These lead service lines, what we're doing is we're gonna identify all portions of these service lines from the water mains all the way to the customer's house. Now, I do want you to know that even in all my years, I've only been here for a few years, but even when I talk to people who's been here a lot longer than me, there's only been very few instances of lead found throughout the thousands of miles of distribution piping that we have here in Wanda County, our service territory. Please understand that BPU water system is very old, okay? Metropolitan water started back in eighteen sixty, and some of those things were inherited. And so we do have places that are very old, but even still, even with all of that, any lead, because as you guys know, this lead and copper rules passed back in the nineties, we have been removing from the system since then. And our distribution crews, we know a really great job. Because of that, this lead service line inventory, if we have lead, if we have lead, one of the big things, and we'll be working with the Communications Group to get this published next year, one of the big things you're gonna see is we'll have a website, and on the BPU website, there'll be a map, and the customers will be able to look at the map, go to their house and say, hey, do I have a lead service line? And that information that we have here at BPU will be available there. Some of these other two things are two things that I hope we never have to do, and I hope we're doing our, we're working on our due diligence to make certain that we don't. But if we do have a line that is listed as a lead service, or galvanized requiring replacement, or it is unknown, meaning for some reason, throughout all of our evidence, we don't know what pipe material is in the ground. We will have to annually notify those customers, say, hey, we don't know what your service, your pipe material is, and I will be one of the requirements. That may change. The second one is if there was one of these services, and for something, some reason, something happens that disrupts the the flow of water through that system. And let me step back a second. One of the big things without having lead in your lines is if you have water flowing through there, it can reach a state where the lead kind of equalizes, and as that water chemistry flows through, it's completely, it's okay, like, I mean, lead is bad, but it's not as bad as what happens when we stop the water flow and cause our water to agitate that surface. It'll change the amount of lead in our water, and it will spike. It'll go up really high. And that's when you really hit your action levels and other things. So one of the requirements, this last requirement is if there was a water main break, and you know, we have an old system, we have a couple hundred of these a year, and other places, depending on if people shut down a fire hydrant too fast, we may have more. Or if a meter is being changed, that causes changes in water flow conditions, and that can cause an increase in the lead that a person may have in their line. Also, just going to sleep at night and waking up in the morning, that water will sit there, and it causes changes. So those are a couple of the highlights, the things we're trying to avoid. Then we go to the next slide. And as we just talked about that lead and copper rule, but before I get to the field investigation, I did also want to kind of stress what we did thus far. So again, these things were passed in twenty twenty-one, and as we're going forward, last year, twenty-something different. Pretty much all the management staff and water, led by Steve and all of his group, all of us working, along with all the clerks, we reviewed over some four hundred and fifty thousand pages of historical documents inside the on-base that our admin team here manages. That was a lot of work. I think I told you guys about that. We made it, not a game, but we had a leaderboard, you know, we tried to keep track and really motivate people to push through that, because it was a marathon, it wasn't a sprint. And even though we finished that part, it was important to stress to everyone, like, that's just the first step in our service inventory. And so our next step, and this is where we're coming to here, is our actual field investigation. So, next slide. So the field investigation is what we're doing right now. This field investigation is, even though we went through those four hundred and fifty thousand different documents, different pages, scanned documents, microfilms, work orders, drawings, building code things, we still didn't know some areas. For example, when Wanda County, not Wanda, Kansas City, Kansas grew as an annex areas during the sixties and seventies, we didn't have a lot of knowledge of those services, those areas of town. And those were the areas that we're, you're gonna see later on today, where we don't have a lot of information. So what we're doing is places where we know there is a meter box, we're sending our troubleshooters, they're gonna walk out, open a meter box, shine a flashlight in, look inside, see what that pipe material is, and like, hey, it's copper, it's galvanized, it's lead, we haven't had any lead yet. Hopefully never, but they'll be able to see it. Those were the services are known as curb stops. We send those to our hydro evacuation evac crew, and they're going out, and they're actually digging a hole around that curb stop to expose that water main four feet below the ground, and they're looking down and doing the same thing. Our goal is to do a hundred a day. We had over like thirteen thousand of these that we needed to visit. And these, these troubleshooters, these, these employees in the water group, they're going out there every day, and they're trying to knock these out. We're hoping to finish the field investigation this year. If we could finish that field investigation, plus our historical investigation that we already did, we'll be on track to complete this inventory. I was always told never to give a date. Soon, okay? So we're hoping to complete that inventory soon, very soon. But you could do the math there. We're really pushing to get that done. Now, that deadline is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. We are on track to achieve that deadline of submitting information in time. And then, because of our amazing people here, we're also on track to have our, our maps available on the website. This is a very doable thing. I do want to stress, though, I was looking over at Kansas City, Missouri, yeah, Kansas City, Missouri Water, as they were doing theirs, and they actually sent theirs out. They went out to a bid, and they sent theirs out to a bid, and they went out to hiring a consultant to do this very same work. And it was, oh, I can't remember the number now. I want to say it was like one point eight million dollars. And I could go back and double check, that number may be off. But they spent a lot of money to hire someone to come in to just to start to wrangle the data, and that's only the start of it, right? Once you start digging into any project, if you ever did a kitchen remodel at your house, once you open a wall, you see all sorts of problems. I can only imagine what's gonna happen there. So, next slide. I did want to show you guys kind of what is hydro, this. So we have a couple different setups. We have a larger truck, but we also have this smaller trailer setup, which really helps us get into these smaller neighborhoods and just kind of maneuver around cars and other things. And so what you see on your left side of the screen is the truck, and on the right side is the actual crew, they're showing, clearing out where a curb stop is, so that can expose that water line. And it turns that, it's just mud. It's like a giant vacuum that sucks up mud. That's really what it is. But it's very non-destructible. That's the advantage of it. So if there's a gas line or something there, we have a very low risk of damaging underground utilities. That's the reason we do it, versus me going out there with a shovel or a backhoe, I'll break something, I guarantee it. So next slide. So the other group is, oh, sorry, is our map overview. So this is what they're actually gonna see, and we're gonna show you this in a live demo a little bit. The green dots, go ahead and go to the next slide. The green dots means we already verify what was there. The red dots mean we still gotta figure out something. The shape helps tell us who needs to do it. So the triangles is one group, and the squares are the other groups. We don't call them squares and triangles, but they're, those are different groups. All right, next slide. So this is what our troubleshooters normally see. So he's going out there, he's popping a meter lid. They're visiting a lot of people's houses. A lot of these houses are actually west of six thirty-five. Typically, west of six thirty-five is kind of where you'll see a lot of this work. And as I pan around on the map in a little bit, you may see some of that. It's north and south of the river. There are some places east of six thirty-five, but the vast majority is in those parts of towns that we annex. Next. So I did want to put in some screenshots. I'm going to try to do a live demo. But in case I have technical difficulties, this is to take the place of that, because there's a curse. It is bound to happen.
So Philip, quick question.
Yes, sir.
So west of six thirty-five, you're mostly concentrating on the meter boxes. East of six thirty-five or the curb stops?
A lot of times, yeah.
Are you doing both at any one location?
Yes.
You are? Okay.
Yes. So, but it's all about the data that we don't have.
Right.
Okay, so east of six thirty-five, we, we pretty much have that data, and we're able to complete that. I would say ninety-nine percent of that area we have.
Right.
There may be some missing information that just got lost over time, and we gotta go get those. The areas that are the big concern is where it was annexed by the city. As the city grew, they purchased the water departments from the Royal Areas, and that's the information we don't have. And we just gotta find these unknowns and confirm that they are not lead. We believe they won't. In thirty-five years, I've seen one service on the customer's side, and we replaced it.
Just for one additional piece of information for the board, east of six thirty-five is where the majority of our basement meters are. West of six thirty-five is where the meters are out in the yard.
Yeah, so majority of it. It's, it still goes back and forth, but yeah, majority of it, yep.
All right, so with that first, the number one, what you're seeing is what the field personnel will see. Number two shows the data that they can input, and number three shows what happens when they're finished filling that in. And I'm gonna go into more detail. Next slide. So is this the moment? Oh, no. So the other thing we do, of course, is today's day and age is all about data analytics, and we actually keep track of these numbers. This picture is fairly old, but it just shows you like, hey, we have thirteen thousand eight hundred to go on total, just the total number of places, and we even broke it down based on some more information. And this is how we kind of can keep track of what was completed thus far. And so we just look at that constant. Next slide. All right, so this is the part where I said there was gonna be a curse, but if you have a question, this is a great time to just chime in with the question while I get this set up. But what we're gonna try to show is what? Oh, I'm ready to do the share. Okay. All right, what we're gonna show is share screen. Start now. Yeah, yeah, I got it. Great. My phone is just coming. I had a permission issue. Here we go. All right, so what we're using is a piece of software called Field Maps. This is from ASRI. BPU, over the last couple years, has spent a lot of money putting every GIS, Geographic Information Systems, in place. So this particular piece of software allows us to geographically, wherever something is, that's how I like to describe it as. If you have a question of where something is, we use our GIS. This application, Field Maps, makes it really simple for our people in the field to go out, collect data. That data is sent from their phone, through the internet, through our security firewalls, all that stuff, into our database, and allows us to instantly and live review it. And so this is what a person may see. So I want to just kind of zoom around and pan for a second. So what you're seeing is I'm off of Gibbs Road and Fifty-first Street. I just opened up the map somewhere. As you can see, there's a lot of red squares, there's a lot of green circles. Some of this stuff we already know, some of we don't. And not every house right now is shown, because we may already know everything about that particular house. And so we try to limit the amount of data we're sending to the person in the field. So we only show what's important to them. So what happens when that, I'm going to pretend I'm a troubleshooter. So I'm walking down the street. I'm looking for a meter box, which are the squares. I could select the square. We give every single point a unique identifier. We call this a register number, and that's how we kind of keep track of things. And then this is the window that appears. So this is the person walking through, and they're gonna gather this data on here. They choose edit. And they'll select, hey, I was here today. And the time will come up at six twenty-one, so we know what time they were at individual houses. If my name was on here, these are various people's names. We track who is doing it. When I open that meter box, I will be able to see both the portion in front of the meter and the portion after the meter. The portion in front of the meter, we call BPU material, because that's the portion of the service line that BPU owns and maintains. And so I could say that's copper. And then I could do the same thing on the customer's side. Just for record, I'm not gonna save this right now, because this is someone's actual house. Don't want to do that. And then we also track, especially if it's a back truck, if we have to come back and restore the grass, or we dig a hole or something, and those kind of things. And then there are some other things. We could take notes, but soon as I press save, the biggest thing is our GIS group, wherever they are, supervisors, wherever they are, is able to see this information live, and we're gonna discard, because I don't need to save that. But just that fast, there, that's the reason they're able to do a hundred a day. The technology really increased our productivity. And because of the investments that you guys have approved over the years, allows us to get this done. I couldn't imagine trying to do this any other way. I'm gonna stop sharing. We're gonna come back to this slide. I think I only got one last slide. I was gonna talk about what's coming up in the future, soon as I remember how to stop sharing. And I don't remember how to stop sharing. Thank you. That's my, that's my kids right there while we're at it. So that's my oldest son, my youngest son. Thanks. There you go. All right. So here we go. So what's next? So right now, we're working through those site visits. The hydro vac is going out. We're doing all this stuff. If for some reason, so let's say we come to a customer, says, you know what, don't come on my property. I don't want you on my property. That's a real reason, I mean, possibility. So far, we haven't had that issue. Or we might come across a number of places, maybe they're just buried under concrete, and we can't find where the service is. We may come back and do customer surveys. We've been working with David and his group, that if we need to do customer surveys in the future, we may be able to send a letter, especially like as Mr. Johnson was sharing, if their meter is inside, they can go inside their house and look at that pipe material. We might be able to see it. Or we may do machine learning analysis. We may say, hey, based on all these houses, everyone in this house is copper. I mean, in this neighborhood is copper. We think you're copper too. And that's actually an acceptable method. And the last part is sampling is actually possible to just go grab a water sample, and like, do you have lead in your water? If there's no lead in your water, you probably don't have a lead pipe. And that's another method. Next slide, I think I'm done. Hey, thank you, everyone, for your time. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Philip, can I ask you, or maybe it's a question for Steve? How do you balance all of this with your daily workload? I don't know how it happens.
So, so that, I mean, that is it. And so we've tried to throw every bit of resource we can. So guys, when they go out with a so in, in, starting with the first phase we did was in-house, all of us, we did it in our free time. So as soon as you, if you got your work done, we tried to get it worked out as quick as we can. And when I say everybody did it, that included me, the directors, we all did it. We were reviewing the history. Doing that, we saved the utility about six hundred thousand dollars by doing it in-house, not taking that outside, just by what we saw with the, what the contract was for Kansas City, Missouri. And we kind of knew that going in, it was gonna be four to six hundred thousand. It is, it's six hundred thousand. This next phase, we're gonna get it done with our crews and our troubleshooters. And we'll get all these, we'll get these unknowns done, because we don't want to deal with the not having unknowns, because all the stuff of having to stock these filters and pitchers in the storeroom, and every time you gotta go out, you gotta give six months of filters, you gotta go sample and stuff. We don't want to deal with that. And we're gonna be fortunate enough that we don't have lead. We're gonna find that we don't have lead services. I've seen one in thirty-five years, and we've seen a lot of services in that time. We've, we've crossed a lot of services. I don't believe if we find any, it may be only one or two, I would say, but I would say in that area, we found it, we have not found one else in that area. So we, we've already confirmed that. But like I said, it's, it's just we're, we're trying to manage our people, and when we have extra, like I said, let's say, when we can, we throw more people at it in the troubleshooter. My goal for them is a hundred, hundred boxes a day, seven hundred a week. We know that's not always gonna happen. Last week, they didn't get seven hundred, but the week before, they got like nine hundred. So we can average about seven hundred, we'll get there. And they know how important it is. And luckily, Philip talking about someone not on the property, well, most of these boxes are all in the right of way, so we have the right to be there. It's not a big, it's not a big deal to be there, so that we're in the right of way. And every utility across the country is doing this. Kansas, Water One has a lot of unknowns, because they've grown so much. They've got a lot of unknowns. They've got to deal with. And so we're all doing it. We're gonna meet our deadline. I, I promise we will be there. So, and then we'll move to the next phase, that's sampling for schools and daycares of getting that plan in.
Steve, can you talk about timeline? So when do you, when do we complete Phase One? When do we get to the next phase?
So what I considered Phase One was our historical review. Phase Two, I consider we're in right now. That's field verification. Phase Three will be setting our sample plan. So we know that we need to be done with Phase Two by October sixteenth of nineteen, or in two thousand twenty-four. So it's a year and a half away. We've got to be done with that. And we will, we will, like I said, we will meet that goal. I hope to be done before, by the end of the year. We're pushing to get done by the inventory part of it in my year. Then we'll start, next year, we'll start setting the, getting the schools, and the schools are, the one thing about KCK, they've built a lot of new schools, so all those new schools, they, they are part of it. It's, it's the schools that were built after, or before nineteen eighty.
Yeah, or eighty-two, yeah.
Yeah, something right in there. Any of the schools built before that, and then we'll set up about sampling. Daycare is gonna be the same way. We'll get the list from the state, the daycare from the state, and we'll start stamping it. We have five, we have five years. We have to have it all done by five years. We can do it all in one year, if it's manageable, but we just have to test each one of those within five years. So, we're in good shape.
Steve, or so I guess Philip, you could answer this also is, so if we do find lead leading up to the house, do we notify the customer that their service is lead?
Yeah, we would notify the customer, and we have to make that determination as, by the state, by the rule, the state, the federal, federal rule. It's not the responsibility of the utilities to replace that.
No.
But I would guess that we would probably look about replacing that, because we're, we're not, we're not gonna be like a lot of cities. A lot of cities, they have thousands and thousands of lead services. We're not gonna be that way. So I would say if we come across one, we'll most likely be replacing it. And, and, but once it happens- And and but once it happens, we have to immediately notify them, the state, if we find one. And then, and then, and this, and if we're not going to replace it. Then the customer needs to know that, that, that it's, but like I said, I, I don't expect us to. If we find one or two more, maybe, but I just thirty five years, one and that whole area that we've been in, there's not been another, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, uh. You know, through our strategic planning efforts, you know, we wanted to place a higher focus on communication. So I did have David to come. Just to give an update on. Where we are. So David.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Good evening, board. I'll give you kind of a high level view, kind of where we're at with communications, some highlights and some things we're going to be working on. Whereas this year I was hoping to have Nick Moreno uh introduce him to you tonight, our communications coordinator, but I sent him on an assignment. So he's out uh in the community tonight with a, a group of uh KCK young professionals group that gathered. That's a, a function through the chambers and through the KCK chamber. And I think he's good. He's out there with some of these other folks and they're. They've got a speaker they're listening to. And so I have me with you next time. Nick's been doing a great job. He's been doing our, all of our social media. Uh born and raised in KCK in the Argentine area, um lives in the Rosedale area right now, bilingual. And has added a lot to, to the team. So I look forward to having you meet him here in the new feature. I'll have present to you. Next slide, please. The key messages, these are the key messages that we, we've been using uh for a while now, but we're really trying to. Use these a lot going forward in various forms, community investment, customer focus, environmental steward, local control. You've seen these before, but these, I think if we can weave these key messages when we're communicating with the public. And um our stakeholders, it's real important. Next slide. Ongoing efforts, this is what we do all the time, BP connection, the website. Uh educational videos, direct mailers, press releases, community presentations. I gave one today at noon to uh Wind Out West group. Um I've been, they've been opening up lately, so. I've been doing community presentations now at least one to two to three a week uh for quite a while lately. It's really picked up. So sometimes they're at night, sometimes they're on a Saturday, but uh we're getting back out there and then talking to a lot of, a lot of groups. Um local state, federal government affairs, that's ongoing. As you know, we do marketing materials, open records requests. Um. Be surprised how many we get on various issues and ongoing employee communications. Next slide. Our audiences. Okay, that's simple. There are customers, the media, neighborhood civic groups, just talk to some of those. Community organizations. So aside from the neighborhood groups, the civic groups, um they may be uh like the wind up. Uh the West Business Group uh could be um, I met recently with board members from some other organizations. So. Um it's always good to get in front of them, area businesses, uh elected officials, key vendors. Some of our key vendors, they've got big audiences, UG state federal staff. Um it's real important to have relationships with the staff, particularly at the federal level. Um I, I know that for a fact because it's been a year communicating constantly with Moran's staff and David's staff. And that's a reason why we were able to go to the top of the list for those, for those uh stack grants. And then BP employees is an audience. Next slide. Okay, what do we do? We'll review our BP connection newsletter. That's mailed a couple of times a year. Do, it goes out, it literally touches all our customers, provides key info. It also goes out to key stakeholders. We have online downloads, so people go online and download it. It tends to have a little bit of a shelf life. I'm going to talk a little bit more of what's going on. So we do an e-newsletter version of that. As well, our newsletter right now goes out twice a year. We're getting ready to go to press here at the end of the month. It'll be going out um the end of, end of May, uh going out again and hitting mailboxes. So that last. Weekend in May, we'll start going out to mailboxes again. And it's, and it's well received. Next slide. Our website, we just did a press release on that, uh recognized nationally by the American Business Awards for Design. There's a lot of entries, other web winners, there's some pretty big names, MetLife, State Farm, AT&amp;T. Hey, quick on the draw, my friend. Anyway, so I, I was proud of the fact that we got a gold. Uh somebody's other ones, State Farm and others got a bronze. Uh part of it was our redesign. This is one of the judges quotes there, great work, creative websites, informative. Um we've got, we've added new content pages, the board meeting page, speaker signups, ten new videos on customer interest. We've won sixteen national, regional communications and social responsibility awards. In recent years and that, and that's, that's quite an accomplishment. So hats off to, to everybody uh on staff as well as our board. Next slide. So I got some stats here. Our site is a continual work in progress. So. We are adding pages and updating pages weekly, sometimes every other day. The results speak for themselves. So there's been some dramatic increases in our website visibility and viewership. Three million page views in the last two years. User sessions have increased. I put metrics there and I try to get a quarterly report. And a year-end report of, of our usage, where it's going, where people are going, new visitors to the site. For clicks to our different videos, banners, PDFs. The first quarter alone of this year, we've had a hundred and eighty-five thousand page views. Twenty-one, almost twenty-two thousand have just gone to the billing, bill pay options page. And our website's pretty big. It's got six hundred and fifty pages. There's, it, it's a pretty robust site. Next slide. Some other stats here, our traffic has increased. A, a lot of downloads, people are downloading the PDFs there for various ones. The most visited page, of course, the homepage, bill pay options, the outage map. Uh views in the outage map uh decreased a little, which is okay. We haven't has many outages, that's part of it. Um average time spent on a page, almost four minutes. Talks about once landing on the site, um a lot more people have been going to careers page. And we've seen a little increase for the first time of some of the new users on the Spanish side of the site. Next slide. Other ones, last year with this, how many visitors on our website? We also have a contact us online form page. So instead of having to call into the u- utility, you can email there and that goes directly to either water trouble, electric trouble. Water engineering, electric engineering, or customer service. So people, instead of calling, they click on there. Contact the department for whatever. You can see how many people have, have, have used that this last year. Our chatbot continues to grow. People go on there and just talk with the chatbot, ask questions, get the answers they want. And our YouTube channel, that's how many views last year in a YouTube channel for our videos and that, and that's, that's really growing quite a bit. And those get shared in another area. So I had a couple of teachers called me recently. Can we use some of your videos in our classrooms? I said. Whichever ones you want to use. And so some of them are doing that. Next slide, please. So those are videos. Um we've got one on understanding my bill. That gets used a lot. Talks about all about, you know. The different charges, the BPU charges, UG charges. We're working on one, the ways to pay your bill and the streetlight issues. On our YouTube channel, we have seventy-three videos, a lot of them on energy efficiency, water savings, safety and so forth. Next slide. Direct mail postcards, we just sent one out on text alerts. Um we are sending one out on streetlights. These are well received. Um you know. People will look at them and some of them will, I've heard they'll save them when I talk to the neighborhood groups, whether they're the bill stuffer, they would just throw away. So um but we got to look at other ways to get these out electronically because postage keeps going up and up and up. Next slide. Homepage sliders. So this, every month we put different sliders on our homepage. The one that's always consistent, so it slides, is, is ways to pay your bill. Okay. And then we have one right now talking about the upcoming rate hearings. And then we, but we have other ones. So we rotate different ones on there. Okay? Next slide. Emergency banners. Um we've not had to use these. Um for quite some time, but it's good to have them. So. If some, I've already got them created. So if something happens, we need to put something on her. It's obnoxious right there on our homepage. It would be on our big outage alert, a boil order, a weather closure. Emergency electric reduction event, frozen pipes or high call volumes. Good to have them prepared, have them ready to go. So it's a, it's a quick click, put them on there. And that helps alleviate calls and so forth. Next slide. Employee newsletter. Uh Watson Water goes out six times a year to all our employees, sent electronically. The gentleman I was just talking about, Nick Moreno, first assignment, I said, hey, let's redesign this thing. Do what you want. This is what he came up with, was really well received. And we brought out um. Um employee spotlight is something that we had before, we dropped it. And employees like it. So it talks about particularly focus on newer employees. Hey, meet so-and-so, there's a little bit about him. Next slide. Social media. Um. Facebook, that's how many followers we have, Twitter, LinkedIn. Next door is really where we're seeing the most traction, the most growth. Um you have twenty-seven thousand plus followers. Touches a lot of neighborhoods, almost a hundred forty neighborhoods in our community. Um just was in a meeting with. Fifty, well, forty-nine other, the top fifty public power utility communications folks. We get together, we have uh. Conference calls, we share information, it's a great resource. Found out now Facebook, the new thing now start getting into Facebook reels. That's the thing, you're going to get a lot more traction to reach more people than just a Facebook post. So that's something we're working on. Next slide. Still to come. And there's a lot on here, but I want you to know what's, where we're going to be working on. And. This is pretty much all this year. Okay? We're going to look at marketing uh paperless billing. So um once a month, um I, my team and I sit down with Jeanetta and her team as supervisors. And what do we want to market? Right now for, you know, customer service, for different services and programs to help get the word out, right? A challenge from Jeanetta and Lori Austin is Bill, hey, we need to get more people on paperless billing, you know, saves on postage and so forth. So. Let's see where they're at now. What can we do to, to raise the bar on that? I like, I have no problem being held accountable for metrics. I'm working uh tomorrow morning with um uh Maurice Moss on an annual sustainability report. This is something new. It'll be something, it'll be in our website and also be a handout talking about all the things we do from a sustainability issue. So be looking for that. And it'll be interesting. Uh we've met with all the supervisors and we're going to get more photos from the field for social media. People like seeing the guys working in the field. And particularly when we have an issue, I've noticed this when there's a storm. People are like, oh my God, this, when are we going to get our power on? What's our ETA? Blah, blah, blah. If they see pictures of the field, they see how bad the damage is. That takes that, takes that heat down quite a bit. People go, wow, it is bad. They got a lot going on there, right? That helps a lot. So. We've challenged all the supervisors to go out there and get as many photos from the field, send them in. We can use those in a lot of ways. Cause I can't be everywhere and the supervisor's already out there, we can get some great shots. Um. We're looking at exploring a stronger working relationship with the school districts. Bill and I are going to be having a meeting with all three districts. We've got some ideas uh we want to do to, to, to develop um. Stronger working, even, if, if even when it comes to recruiting the future employees, right? Get to them early, that type of thing. Um customer satisfaction research, we're probably going to do that. Early this fall. Probably I'm looking at right when school starts, so probably let's say September. And we'll do online, phone, email, what we've done in the past, we do it every other year. And um the, and it like when we have the focus groups, I'll have the board part of those as, as you've been before, we'll kind of divide and conquer on those type of thing. And we, we survey all our customer classes, as you know. Direct mailers on some other prop, you know, maybe it's copper rule, customer research. Other additions to the website, we've got a page built, they're ready for the strategic plan, some capital projects, soon to come. New service, transfer service, surge protection. There's always stuff we're trying to add. Need some new videos for electrical water production, the benefits of municipal utility. Some visuals for the Nierman Power Plant. We can't take people in the power plant on tours. So I, I want to work on some visuals that. Len can have in this conference room. So people can go to the conference room and it can almost be like a virtual tour of the plant, so to speak. Um renewable energy leader awareness campaign. We're going to update the look of our newsletters and we're going to look at. Um growing electric uh electronic distribution of that. So maybe send it initially out to all those that are on paperless billing. So let's say we have sixteen thousand on paperless billing, give or take, it's in that area. Email it to them. That saves on postage. And then we're also looking at maybe doing this on a quarterly basis. Might not be as nice fancy of a looking or colorful of a newsletter. But we can get stuff out there quicker, you know, more timely information, get it out there. I think that's important. You talked about your community group or you want to get going and we need to get something out there in the newsletter. So that type of thing. Um. Looking at a media key stakeholder days and inside look at BPU. There's a need for this, so we, we would have them tour the, the, go to the Nierman plant and get. A virtual tour, so to speak, go to Nierman Water Treatment Plant. Bring in some of our key staff to speak to them. We're looking at holding one for the, for the press, looking at holding one for UG leadership. There's a lot of commissioners. New commissioners haven't been to our facilities, right? We did it years ago. It was, it was very successful. Um also do one for, uh we're looking at doing one for state, key state legislators. Not just our Wind Out County delegation, but other key folks on the utility committee and things like that, right? And their staff. And then also there's been a desire and an ask for the congressional and senate staff. From DC and locally to go on such a tour. And I think that's real important. And we'll look at maybe doing another one for some um. Key neighborhood leaders. I got asked today when I spoke to the Wind Out Business Group, they said, we'd like to tour that water plant. That really sounds interesting. So here's how many we can have. I need as much advance notice as possible so I can work with. With Steve Nurshul and Steve Green and others to get that set up. So that's coming. Um. Looking at updating our, our photo library, promote our, we do a lot of sponsorships and we really don't. We don't really do a lot of talking about it. Um find a creative way to do that. Heat mapping. So. We all, we're ongoing, looking at our website, you know, I said constantly updating it. Once a year we do a heat map study. Where we take a look at where are people clicking? Where are they not clicking? Or they're trying to click here, but there's nothing there for them. So that kind of helps us as we redefine the site. Um uh getting ready to work on their legislative scorecard for this year. And then we're going to start working on our legislative strategy for, for twenty twenty-four. Um ongoing, there's the utility scammers, those efforts. Here's something I got back from talking to um. Thing that came from about three neighborhood groups that love the fact that we got our policies on the website. But they said, you know, they're kind of hard to print out. And I just want to get certain policies and not all of them. So we're going to look at and make it an easier way for people to print some of those off our website. Not changing the policy, but maybe changing the way they're formatted on there. So it's easier way for people to print stuff off there. Easy, easy fix. Um an idea of mine is maybe a welcome kit for new customers, something that can go out to them. New customer signs up for service and here's all about the utility, a little bit more about the community, that type of thing. Once we get through our customer satisfaction research this year. After that, I want to have an ongoing customer service survey on our website where it's like maybe three questions. People click on there and, and ask some questions. And then we've got to improve our brand standards a little bit. We've got some folks that. Don't realize we have a, a, you know, we've got, we've got brand, a, a process for our brand, spend a lot of time rebranding utility and sometimes. Weird things happen with it. So next slide. That's it. So we got a lot happening. You can't, you can't, I, I, when I had this meeting with the. Other um like we're, I think we're number fifty as far as size of the public power utilities. Everybody goes to the same thing. They say. It's always a challenge with communicate. A lot of the folks just say, and I find this in the neighborhood groups like. Yeah, I don't care what you're doing, just keep my rates competitive and keep my lights on and my water running. That's the name thing. Then others, it's like, how do we put value into the utility? It's a real challenge. People have a lot of value on their, 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 their um. Internet provider, because they're getting entertainment off there or news or information. Put a lot of value in this. They put a lot of value in the things, but. They don't put the value in actually the electrical water service. And how do we get there? And so um we talked about that on a conference call with these other utilities and everybody's like, whoever can figure it out, share it with the rest of us. We're trying to find ways to. To do that. So. We can't communicate enough with our public. We have to do it multiple ways. It has to be constantly dripping on the rock with information of variety of ways. Not everybody goes to the web and everybody goes to social media. Just so you, you got to tell the message and tell the message and tell the message. And I think we're also way overdue to also, we did, I think. And I think we're also way overdue to also we did, I think, a year or two ago in our BPU connection. Talked about our contributions to the community, contributions, services for the U G. And I think that's something we need to ramp up again. And get that out there. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, David, thank you very much. I I've got a couple of questions. So do we know what percentage of customers? Residential customers that we have valid email addresses for?
Think we've got. Those what the ones we know, I don't have the exact number. I think it's around sixteen thousand and some change. Those are that have signed up for paperless billing for sure. We've got a communication strategy meeting internally tomorrow, and I'll bring that up with some of my colleagues. What do we have? I know we've got email addresses, but some of them are in different places. And how do we get them all one location? And what what I think do is we, what I've talked to other folks, what they do is say. People don't, you know, send the email out to them. They say, this is your electronic, here's your newsletter, right? Or maybe it's a news announcement or something. We don't want to spam them, but when it's appropriate. And if they want to opt out, fine, you know, but I think we've, I know we've got at least sixteen, the paperless billing one, folks, that's at least sixteen thousand. But we got to work and keep capturing those.
Yeah, and and. You know, in in terms of, you know, trying to get. More folks into paperless billing. I mean, obviously, that's an important component. We got to have valid email address to do that. But you know, every time I get a mailer, which are beautiful, by the way, they're just gorgeous because they're all color, it's all a thing. And every time I look at it. I mean, I'm not a paper person, right? Or at least I try to avoid it if I can. All I I look at it and think how much money that has been spent on it. That's that's my perception, right? And so what I was wondering is like, you know, as a paper or is it, yeah, as a paperless bill user, can I opt out of all? Mail pieces and get everything via email? I mean, I'd love to just have everything via email.
What what I could do is there's a couple of ways we do this. So when I. And thank you for bringing that up. I do find with those, and we got to find other ways to do it, and maybe more email or electronic, but those those mailers. If I put something on on this, I look at how many are signed up for this, like, okay, and it's always move the needle. If if people respond to them now. We do have a large segment of community, though they want that hard copy of that newsletter.
Understood.
But. If we, if I. And when I sit down and when I order a database through I T, I said, get me a, give me a list of all your residential customers or I can order. All customers, all classes, there's a lot of ways I do that, right? And they'll send me everybody's name and address and I do a merge purge and we. Send it out to a mailer, mail them out. What I could do is order it through I T and I have to check with I T, but if, you know, all those except get me a list of all customers, all classes. Except for those on paperless billing. So I have to find out from I T what they're able to separate and whatever, but that would be a way to do that.
Well, and I just, I think we should offer customers the option, right, to opt in or opt out of that. Because I, while I completely agree that we have. You know, perhaps better than a fifty percent segment of of our community that prefers the paper. We're discounting the ones that don't. We're trying to push people. We're trying to get rid of postage anyway, right? We're trying to get rid of. Printing costs and things like that. And I don't know, that's just something I thought of there.
That's something we've got to looking at doing this. So your timing's right because we've got a. Communication strategy meeting tomorrow, and that's something I'll bring up with some folks in the room smarter than I am, and we'll we'll kind of we'll kick it around. But. I I think it's doable, very doable because there are people who, and the younger folks, they they want anything paper. They want everything. Online, you know, do it, do it this way and that way. I've talked to some other utilities and I've not talked to Janetta and I'm not talked to Lori or Bill about this yet. So this is just talking out. Out of school, but other utilities have to get more people signed up for paperless billing. They had like an offering, a one time incentive, right?
Sure.
You know, one time incentive of not much, and it's been successful. So. Something we need to look at.
Okay. And then second question I have it and may not be for you, but you mentioned the. The contact us section, we've talked about that a couple of times now, where those emails are routed to electric or water because there may be an issue or customer service or wherever they are. Do we have metrics around those? Like, do we have S L A's around response times to those or anything? My guess is no, because it sounds new, but. We probably should.
I I don't have those. I do have, I I know how many we have. Okay, I'm going there. But that's something we need to check with. We we do not, you do, we do not. Okay. So I do know. The response from people that they they like it, they see, I don't have time to call. I don't even have time to, I just want to. Send this in and it so it goes to whatever, particularly it's being used. A lot by some customer service folk for customer service issues. That aren't major, it's being used by people that want to work with electric or water engineering, right? Builders, developers, things like that. And we're seeing it used for the electric side, particularly on three issues. Seems to be so.
And really, I'm just looking for response times to those. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, okay. We get. We'll keep doing what we do, keep rocking and rolling. So. We've got a meeting coming up. I've I've met with. Three of the N B R leaders in the last couple of weeks. I've got some more and then I'm going to gather them all together here. We're going to sit down kind of a round table.
David, David, did you have questions for David?
Well, no, just wanted to thank him for the review and still to come was the the most provocative too. For the areas that we've accomplished and the areas that he's covered. And along that line, as we've been talking about the community engagement. And how we also get other information out. I know we talked about the rate increase hearings and how that's disseminated. That we somehow find a way to integrate what I think is a very well defined and outlined plan and do also community engagements as well. I I like the policies that then the ability to have them more easily understood generally. And I mean, other other issues to legislative scorecard to make sure we're on point. But I just wanted to highlight, certainly to thank David for his continued already community engagement. And helping to get this out. We still have a ways to go, but with the still to come that he listed, I thought it was was taken under advisement. I hope we can take some of his planning. And incorporate it into other aspects that we've already discussed, including in the work session earlier today. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, guys.
So one thing, one thing David mentioned. Although two, three, four times is. We do have a communication strategy meeting tomorrow and. Timing of him updating and then getting feedback and going into the meeting tomorrow is kind of. Kind of lines up perfectly with some of the conversation we'll we'll have. But. Basically, all the all of our strategic plan objectives, I put that on a rotating basis on the calendar throughout the year. So those meetings will come back up. Over and over again, as a way of. Reminding ourselves, here's our strategic plan goes, here's what the board wants to see. And now we're tracking that throughout the year through those rotating calendars, schedules, and then. I'll play play pay closer attention to. Maybe place some of those items on the board agenda. Right before we get into those strategic planning meetings, because there may be some feedback suggested you guys may have. As we update you along along the way on where we are. So.
Bill, one additional question, and I know I'm going to get it another way, but is there any way that we can get David's deck just as it's PowerPoint? No need to send. Thank you.
All right, final. Final things, Miss Lake, whoops. I'm going too fast. So. Board is met as a committee. On a few occasions and certainly. You talked today in the in the work session about the board community engagement committee. So I'll turn it over to you, Madam President, to see if there's any further comments. We'll be asking for a vote on a resolution, but trying to get all any other questions and comments on the way first.
Are there any additional questions or comments from any other board member? Mr. Haley, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none.
This is Jeff. I move to approve resolution number five two eight four. Okay, well, I've just made a motion. You still can.
Before we. Decide to approve the. Resolution, I just wanted to. Advise the board to appreciate. The comments that I received during the work session that I was. More concerned about ensuring that. All of the. Districts receive information about. Our program. That wasn't clear. At that point. That ever will. In the process of being addressed. So it took a little. Dialogue to find out that we did. Include. The N B Rs. And we are going to make sure that. The application goes out to all the approved districts. I wasn't clear that all of this was included at that point. So. I apologize. And then I compliment you that you finally came. My direction. Never making sure. The community was addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I've got a motion.
I second.
Motion to approve resolution number five two eight four has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye. Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. And then finally, on a miscellaneous comments. Yesterday I was a little bit squeezed for time, but I did go out to James P Davis Hall at the Wyandotte County Lake. Unified government is kicking off what they call Plan K C K. It's kind of an urban. A unified government planning effort. Across the the entire county and. So part of what they're trying to do is also pull pull in and engage the community and solicit community input into. Into their future planning efforts. Okay? And. There are several master plans that they're trying to come up with an overarching comprehensive master plan for Wyandotte County. Without having to go back and and change all the other master plans that have already been been approved. But. The main thing here is just pulling in public comment and trying to create. Some type of vision for where K C K. Wyandotte County is going into the future. I wasn't there for the entire meeting because I had scheduling conflict that actually City Utilities of Springfield, it came up with some of their executive team. And we met with them. In the around noon and so I had to leave the meeting a little bit early, but there were commissioners there. There was lots of U G employees there. And. And even leading up to that meeting, I'd had some conversations with the U G and the planning department. On making sure that as we move forward. That the unified government and BPU are well connected on what we do together going forward. In terms of future development. Across the city or in any parts of the city. So. It was well attended. I think they're going to have other meetings. So. What I hear of 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 other meetings, I'll make sure I get that out to the board if you want to want to attend. That's all I have. Tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Groneman, do you have any comments tonight?
I'd just like to thank everybody that presented. I also like to thank the committee for the work that they did on the on. Preparing to get us the resolution. For the community engagement. You did a wonderful job. Thank you all for. The extra work that you put in on that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to echo the thanks that. Board member Groneman just gave to both on the copper, lead and copper rule, the update that was given. And of course, from. Our communications division there from. We just heard the overview on two. Those are very well done and I appreciate that. I'm sure we all do. I'm glad that we did get through the engagement committee. It's been a long time coming. Community engagement. Is more crucial as we try to reconcile. With the U G, a way to get our our, some of the public's concerns and all of our concerns. Addressed. So I'm grateful for the time we had in this meeting. I certainly should say too, in closing that. I guess between now and the next time we meet will be the filing deadline. For several of the members of this board and also for the U G Commission. And I hope that most of us will remain dedicated as we have as we go into another term, as you go into another term. To the steadfast improvement for the relationship. Between our rate payers and 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 our taxpayers to make a more livable community. And. I certainly look forward to being engaged in assistance with your campaigns, my fellow board members.
Okay, I would warn, I would warn you not. I would warn you not to use this for campaigning.
Oh, I'm only to get the word out, Angela. What I mean in terms of to get the word out, I have not and spoken to or about anything in general, except that which is publicly known by the way of campaigns. And the discussions that we're having here publicly about the areas that we're embracing. But thank you for trying to clarify. And that's, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Mylan?
I'd just like to thank the presentation presented by the board of the night and his staff for. For the effort to make sure you. Be advised all the issues that. You need to be. Invited to know what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. My comments this evening. Will be brief, but shout out to the entire water department. Because I know literally from the top down, you guys have been working on this lead copper rule thing for a minute. And you know, I think Philip has done such a great job of, you know, explaining in. In terms that non-technical people can understand just how vast this project is. So truly thank you from a community for, I understand we have to comply with it, but. You guys are doing a great job at at helping us meet those deadlines. So thank you and also keeping the community safe. So thank you. I just wanted to thank. Board member Bryant, board member Gonzalez, for your your guys' help and assistance on the community engagement committee. I I know it has been a long time coming and I I hope that we can get to work on that. Really, really quickly. So thank you and thank you for the full board for approving it. Mr. Bryant?
I have no comments tonight.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'd also like to thank Philip for the presentation. I know sometimes compliance issues are not good to deal with, but. We're, I don't want us to be Detroit or that city in Mississippi where our water isn't good for our children and. Our daily use. So I appreciate everything you're doing to meet those deadlines and to keep. Our water safe. And thank you for everybody that's on the committee. I'm looking forward to our. Community ambassador program because ambassadors usually do good work and I'm looking forward to that. I would just like to add, Mr. Johnson, that I tried to attend that meeting at James P Davis Hall, but. They told me there was not a seat available when I tried to enroll for that. So hopefully going forward, I can get in on one of. The next meetings. And that's all I'm happy tonight.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
This is Mary. I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.